A place that we can have as our own, that we can, even if it's a big enough building, that we can rent out one of the spaces for, you know, maybe like a gym use or stuff like that. Not have to compete with the school, be able to have our own practices there, have our own center where the kids can gather, so it doesn't matter what the weather is outside.
Thank you.
Ron Valencourt, I would like to see the money go towards maybe hiring an additional contract deputy. The town is way understaffed when it comes to law enforcement. I live on Goose Pond Road and it's a nightmare with the traffic going up that road between the dump trucks and the cars. It turns into a drag strip. My wife was knocked out by a rock falling off a dump truck three years ago and I had a rock fall in my yard the size of a 10-pin bowling ball last year. They drag race up that straight stretch and it's dangerous. I almost get hit coming out of my driveway. So when I talk to law enforcement, the explanation is we're stretched too thin. We're covering too many towns with what we've got, so why can't we put some money into that?
Did you watch last week's selectmen's meeting?
The what?
Did you watch last week's selectmen's meeting?
No.
We were discussing our contract deputy and some of the routes that we might be able to go because the problem is we're not sure if we're even going to get a contract deputy next year. And we don't even know if it's going to be given to us at all. So we're still working on all that, but we've got some other ideas we're working on.
Yeah, because the town is ultimately responsible for ensuring the safety of the residents, so.
And we do. I mean, we can only do what we're capable of doing. I mean, we've got the sheriff's department, which is supposed to cover. State police really doesn't anymore. They don't do these small towns anymore. They're just taking care of the highways and this and that. So and by with the contract deputies that we've got now, you know, we're making the attempt, but there's not a whole lot of options.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know, in lieu of other stuff that's less important, I feel that law enforcement would be a good expenditure.
Nancy Roma, there was recently an engineering report conducted as an assessment of our municipal facilities. I think especially the town hall needs to be looked at as far as working space, making it more handicap accessible. And if we can follow through with some of their recommendations, I think would be great.
Scott Stanton, it would be helpful to those of us that aren't necessarily in the know to understand exactly what we're doing here tonight, what money we're talking about, where did the money come from, and how much money are we talking about?
Great. I'd be happy to address that. We wanted to start off tonight just by getting some input about, you know, how the community might feel about what to do with this quote, "undesignated reserve balance" we have. I try to stay away from social media, but occasionally I'll look. And I think there's a lot of misinformation about exactly what we have, what's available, et cetera. So you bear with me. I've got one schedule that I think I can talk to that will hopefully explain it to everyone.
Connecting.
You know, there have been a number of, let me, I can talk a little bit while that's coming up. I think there's a lot of sort of misunderstanding about exactly what it is we're talking about. This past year, we went through a town vote to begin the investing of some of our idle cash, if you will, surplus cash that we have. And at that time, it was actually based on the last audit, which went through June 30, 2022. And at that time, we had $6 million in cash. And it was sitting in a bank and it was earning minimal interest. And so we decided that and brought it to the town and it was approved, that we would invest that in something that was extremely safe, as safe as a bank, in my opinion, but would earn a higher yield. That 6 million is what we have as cash to operate the town. Some of that is needed for day-to-day bills. Some of it is basically sitting there with no intended use. The financial statements, though, did identify what we have in what's called "undesignated fund balance," "undesignated reserves," "surplus reserves." All of those categories or those names refer to basically the same thing. These are monies that don't have a call on them in the town. And as of June 30, 2022, the town, which is general fund, had "undesignated reserves" of $2,897,000. The school, at that point, had $1,360,000. So in total, we had $4,257,000 in quote "undesignated reserves." So where's the rest of that? If you think of that as cash, and it more or less is, where's the rest of that? Well, that's sitting in these reserve accounts that we've set up for a variety of capital projects, just like the one we just talked about for the athletic fields. There are capital projects for the road. There's a capital reserve account for West Shore Drive. So we have monies that has been set aside earmarks for very specific things that the townspeople have approved to be set aside. And what's left over is this "undesignated reserves." What I'm going to focus on is the general fund because really, the school board is responsible for the administration of the school budget. And they actually have some well-thought-out plans about their reserve balances and how they would like to see them used. So I'm going to deal with that first column. Now, since the audit, June 30, 2022, we started with basically $2.99 in reserves, "undesignated reserves." Since that time, we've spent some of that money. We've gone through town meetings and had various warrants and articles that have approved for 2023 budget. There were a number of articles that were approved totaling $585,000. And for the current budget, fiscal '24, there was an additional $222,000 that was appropriated and approved by the townspeople. So in addition to that, last year, when we set the tax rate, 300, the selectman decided to use 300,000 of those reserves to lower the tax rate. So we effectively spent some of those "undesignated reserves" for that purpose. I'm sorry, could you blank out that next line? As of right now, we are not, we have made no commitment or plans, hard plans, to use any of our reserves for the tax rate that's represented in the letter you just received with your new valuation. And I think the tax rate in there was $6.99,000, $6.99 cents a thousand. So that leaves us $1,789,000 in "undesignated reserves" that haven't already, we started with close to 3 million, we're down to 1,800,000, basically. So if you could get out a little further. There's a, the town has what's called, and all towns do this, they have what's called, can everyone hear me, by the way? They have what's called a surplus policy. And many, they're not all exactly the same, but they're fairly similar. What they do is they take the size of the budget. And in this case, the town's budget is $3.4 million. That's excluding the school. And by the way, the school has its own policy. So $3.4 million, and we have a policy that says we want to maintain a minimum threshold of reserves, "undesignated reserves" as a contingency fund. Something were to happen at the town, we needed to draw into it, we could do that. The policy says it can be at a maximum level 33% or it can be a lower level 16.7. So if using that range, that minimum level is $573,000 that you would have in reserve, and the maximum level is $1,133,000. So in that case, when you look at that 2.9, that's what's been appropriated, and you set aside the amount that we think ought to be set aside as a reserve level, either the minimum or maximum, we should, we have excess of anywhere from $650,000 to $1,200,000. And I'm going to pause there. Has anyone got any questions before I go on? Okay, so that's really what we're talking about, is how much of that do we want to spend and for what? All right, so now go back up, if you will, Jennifer. Underlying this spreadsheet is a little model. And it's going to show you if we use appropriate anticipated use of reserves to lower the tax rate, fiscal '24. Let's assume we want to use $300,000, again, to lower the tax rate. Plug in $300,000, what happens? It didn't, it didn't change.
Yeah, that went down.
But the rate didn't change. Did something happen to the schedule?
I haven't touched it. And your revenues went down.
Yeah, but go up, Jennifer. See the $6.99? Bear with me, technical difficulty. Go to the tax rate count schedule.
Now put it in there.
Oh, you gotta, you gotta, yeah. Now go back. There you go. That would lower the rate from $6.99, which was the estimated rate that was put out to everyone, to $6.74. Now, on a $500,000 home, what does that mean? It means $128 annually for that resident, for that property owner, as a reduction in their tax bill, just to give you a sense of that. So get on a little further. We've already started to get some input about, well, what should we use these "undesignated reserves" for? Tax relief, we just kind of demonstrated what might happen if we use it there. Athletic field, not only a parking lot, there's an expression of an interest in having some playground equipment that probably we don't have enough money set aside for yet. That's a possibility. The transfer station is having a study done to try to improve the traffic flow in the transfer station, especially in the summertime or the weekends. It's a tough place to get in and out of, and so that's a possibility. What else we got? We got town hall, that was mentioned, some of the assessment that was done. Maybe we should do something here with the town hall. Additional contract deputy or doing something with a, you know, a police force in town of some kind, that's a possibility. And town hall renovations and accessibility. So all those things are on the table. And what we really wanted to do tonight was, as a selectman for me personally, I would love to know what the residents would like. You know, what do they think is important? You know, we could spend this all on tax relief. The problem is that if you do that, you're going to get a reduction in your taxes this year and it's going to go right back next year because you're not going to be able to replicate that. So it's a one-time relief. And so that's a possibility and, you know, that could happen. There's an opportunity here to do something that maybe is a little more lasting in the community that would have benefits going forward. And that would be my own personal preference, but I'm a voter one. So we're looking for feedback around those kinds of things. Let me stop and see if there are any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you have a surplus fund from last year, but you also have a policy that's going to reserve some more, which is going to compound that figure, right? Because in prior years, you've always had "undesignated funds" of 2 million, 1.8 million.
That surplus reserve has been growing. Last year, the town had, when we closed out the books, we had a surplus of revenue over expenses compared to budget. And so that money went into that surplus reserve. The same thing is true with the school. The school had a surplus. The school is projected to have a surplus this year. So they're going through a process of determining what their "undesignated fund balances." And we'll hear from them at some point about what they think those monies should be used for. And then that will go through the political process to get approval. Does that answer your question?
I guess I'm just trying to, so you've got 1.1 million if you're using 33%.
Yes.
That's on top of the reserve that you're coming into this year with, right?
No, it's, go back up. After what we spent, we have $1,489,000.
Yep.
You see that? The maximum amount that we should have in reserves, according to our policy, is $1,133,000, which says you have an amount above that maximum level of $350,000. If you use the lower threshold, which is like 16%, we actually have $900,000. So it's a judgment call on the part of the town where it wants to be with that minimum to maximum level. And that's the town's policy. I understand that many towns use that 33%. But we're going to do a little more investigation on that and find out exactly what. But personally, I don't think the town, in my opinion, has a lot of risk in its budget. And you look at the revenue, it's tax revenue. You know, it's unlikely that we're not going to collect that tax revenue. And the expenses are largely salaries, which, you know, those aren't going to, you know, explode. And it's primarily the roads, I think, that creates most of the risk, in particular, winter maintenance. But that's not a huge, you know, in the overall scheme of things, that's not a seven-figure number. That's my own personal take on it. Yes?
Couple things. You've taken some of my help of that number that was there in the end of fiscal year '22.
Yes.
Have you added any back in?
No, we haven't.
A surplus from 2020, end of 2023?
Of course, July 1st or June 30 was like two weeks ago. And we haven't yet gone through and prepared a, determined what the bottom line was for the town for this year. The school has done that. They were able to put one together. I hope within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to craft one. I suspect there'll be a surplus. I just don't know how big it will be.
Sure. And the board is commended for having these surpluses and understanding your budget and doing a good job. And I think you also would probably be commended for having a policy. Most of the towns in the area don't have such policies.
Is that right?
If you don't mind, I'll use one. Some of the cities do, and some of the towns kind of do. Bridgestone is 15 to 25%, Windsor is 16 to 6, just flat, 16.67. Brunswick the same. Lewiston is 8 to 12%, Gray is 8 to 16.6. Saco was 8 to 10. Shapley drives to 25 because they're on a calendar year. And if they don't do that, they need that every year. How about than getting a tax anticipation? Newfield is 24, 25%. Sanford is 10% informal. They don't have an actual policy. Waterboro is not sure of the target, but they're going to use $800,000 for tax relief this year. As one of those people whose assessment doubled this year, I would certainly be in favor of using some of this for tax relief.
You know, and the first place that I would have gone to find out what is done with local towns is our auditor. And they said three months is standard. And I'm sort of listening to the list you have there. I'm not sure, as you know, we hired an accounting firm to come in and they service many towns. And they're going to be, one of the first things we're going to ask them is, take a look at our surplus policy, take a look at our financial position, give us a sense of what you would recommend for the town. And so there'll be an opportunity for them to come in a public meeting and talk about that. And that may lead to a change in that policy. But, you know, that's something the board really needs to, you know, talk amongst itself at this point to figure out what's right.
Just one of the last quick comments I made. Other things that could go into that would be if you had a tax sale during the year, which you may not have had, but.
We don't have, we've had two in the last, how many years?
20, 19 years.
Like 20 years. There are not a lot, so.
I would think that would not.
Yeah.
Have any designated funds that have lapsed?
I, that's on my list. Personally, it's on my list. I think you got to look at all of our reserve accounts and make sure they're current and still needed for those purposes. And if they aren't, scoop them back into designated reserves. We might need to bring it back to the townspeople for a vote. But we should look at all of those reserve accounts. Quite frankly, I think at both the town and the school. I think we just ought to make sure that everything we've got there is occurring. Yes?
Thank you. Tom, so one thing that I still a little bit more vacation on. In 2022, you ended up with.
$2,900,000.
Yeah, but we pulled out in '23, '24, $800,000 out of that, which is a high percentage of total tax.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand this statement.
You pulled out $800,000, right?
Yes.
Lowered that.
Yes.
How come the revenue didn't supplant that?
Well, it was not intended to. When those warrants were passed, when those articles were presented and passed, they specifically said that it was to be funded from "undesignated reserves." So there was never an intention to generate revenue to cover those numbers.
So it was a one-time?
They were all one-time expenditures for one reason, primarily capital or road-related.
Right, okay. So one thing I'm looking at is the new evaluations. You've almost got 100% increase in the total value of homes.
95%.
That's a huge jump, I mean, that's incredible jump that you're going to be taking in a lot more revenue this year than you ever did, right?
No, no.
Why not?
Let's just keep it simple. If the valuations for the town went from basically $600 million for everyone's property to 1.2 billion. Now, remember, this hasn't been done for 12 years, but that's still a very significant increase in property values. So if the amount you need to collect stays the same, if the base on which you charge the tax rate doubles, in theory, the tax rate should be cut in half.
Right, so what I'm just saying, so from your 6.9, you're saying it would go down to 6.7?
It was 11.95 and.
It would have to go a lot lower because leave half of that, right?
Half of that, half of the 11.95 would be 6, roughly 6, $6. The budget went up this year based on what was approved at the town meeting in June. You know, all of the various divisions within the town had increases in their budget line. But otherwise, it's substantially what's going on with the real estate value doubling and the tax rate basically being cut in half and plus added back to it the costs associated with the additional expenses this year. Yeah?
Okay.
That's all that's in there.
So there's going to have to, you're going to have to figure out what the tax rate is going to be sometime this year, right?
By August, middle of August.
So then we'll have a better understanding of whether you're going to have more surplus or less based on what you're, because, well, only because you've been taking in more money than you've needed every year, right? So assuming that that policy continues, you could be in the same position here next year.
On the revenue side, I mean, some of that surplus we've generated is on the revenue side. And there's been a significant increase in fees, correct? Because of all the construction that's going on in town. So the fee income was greater than what was budgeted. That's part of that. The other reason it's gone up is when new houses are constructed, those values go immediately into the tax base. And so we didn't count on that because we don't know what properties are going to be coming online. So all the taxes associated with major renovations and new projects, all that revenue flows to the town and flows to the bottom line. So those are the principal reasons for the savings. There were a number, there were savings on the expense side as well. I got to tell you, what I've seen in the town, they operate very frugally. You give them a budget, they're going to beat it. And they're going to, they're not going to spend that budget. And so some of that was going on as well. Any other questions? Dennis?
Tom, 12 years ago, at the end of the fiscal year, the town had about $400,000 in designated fund balance. And at a selectmen's meeting a few meetings ago, the tax rate has stayed somewhat the same, you would claim, over the last 10 or 12 years. In that 10 or 12 years, with the extra revenue that was collected, we've gone from $400,000 to above $6 million.
$3 million, Dennis, 2.9 million.
Well, you said we had 6.
No, I said we had 2.9 in "undesignated fund balances."
Undesignated and designated is 6.
Yeah, well, I don't know what it was. Are you saying total fund balance was $400,000 12 years ago? Okay, I think you worded it.
This year before that, we had very, very little. As some of you will remember, we used to borrow money to finish off the year. And we didn't owe tax anymore than we had to. In the town meeting, we would vote to pay off the note to break even. So we've accumulated about $6 million in the last 12 years. And that is 300,000 to 500,000 dollars, $400,000 a year that we've been collecting that wasn't assessed when setting the tax rate because the town should be taxing on the dollar amount they need to operate.
Which is what they do.
Well, they may, they've done what they, just to operate, we wouldn't have all this money.
Well, I just explained to you why we do.
We aren't using the revenue, the distributed revenue properly when you set the tax rate.
Well, I can assure you, in the last few years, there's nothing inappropriate or not proper. What I can tell you is property, new house construction has escalated significantly in this town. When we set the tax rate, we don't anticipate making any provision for that new property coming on the tax rolls. So when they come on the tax rolls, that revenue flows right to the bottom line.
Right, I appreciate that, but I'm talking about the year before. For example, when you set the tax rate this year, you don't go on information that you have from 2023.
Yeah.
Okay, and in the last three years, these aren't my numbers. I mean, these are the numbers that the assessor has set with the state. We've had increased valuation of $160 million. That's right on the state website. And it's right from our assessor. So if you're adding $30 million a year, even $20 million a year in revenue on taxes for the previous year, if that had been done, used appropriately, we wouldn't have $6 million.
I don't understand your use of the word "used appropriately," Dennis. It suggests it's not being used appropriately.
It isn't when it's my money.
No, me, but.
But you're taking more money from me than you actually need.
I'm just trying to find out.
I'm saying we should be taking loans like they were doing back in the day, right?
The budgets are the basis for setting the tax rate. The budgets that are approved at town hall, that are reviewed by the Warren Finance Committee and prepared by the selectmen and then brought to the town hall. When the tax rate is set, it is those expenditure budgets that go into the tax model and it solves to make sure that the tax rate will generate based on the value of the property enough where it will be able to cover that expense by. So I believe it's three things, as I've said. One is a growth in tax value that's current because we've had new properties being developed and drawn online, which there's no way of anticipating. Like, when we go to set taxes this August, I don't know what houses are going to be brought onto the tax roll this year. I just can't, I wouldn't want to estimate that because if you estimate it and it didn't come out right, you'd end up with. because if you estimate it and it didn't come out right, you'd end up with a deficit. So it's new properties. Revenue has been growing faster than the budget had planned for. And a lot of that is associated with this construction that's going on, with permits and fees. And the third thing is there's savings on the expense budget. So those are the three, those are the only three places it can come from. And those budgets are developed and reviewed and then brought to the townspeople for approval. One of the reasons why we brought in this accounting firm was they have expertise in doing this budgeting for a number of towns. And by bringing them in, they can look at our budgeting practices and make sure that in fact, we don't end up, you know, generating more revenue than we need. They're going to be coming, we're going to meet with them tomorrow, as a matter of fact, and they're going to start their work. And when we go to develop a next year's budget, that firm is going to be assisting us in developing that budget. I don't know if I can say anything.
Tom, this other slide that you did may be very helpful because it shows the revenues up there on top. And I mean, you know, to just add to what Tom says, excise tax is another big one. That, you know, we will watch it increase year after year. We estimate on a higher one based on what we've seen over the last three years. But that's another one that you just can't bank on. How many people are going to come in and register what vehicles? So the excise tax continues to jump and jump, even when we estimate it higher. As you can see with what we did, we've already estimated 50,000 higher than the actual.
But you notice permits and licensing is going down as a result of a trend generally that we're seeing. Investment income, this is the result of investing the money differently than we have been. That's going to generate another $200,000 worth of revenue that is already plugged into the tax model.
You're losing the ARPA funds.
ARPA money is going away. Everything else is pretty much the same.
So the tax rate at 11.9, when's the last time that's moved? When did it get set? How many years ago?
We gotta, we gotta stay.
It's been a while, years ago.
It's been there for, I think, seven years.
I think it's seven.
You know, within a, you know, 10, 20...
So do you guys re, like, look at that every year?
Always.
And you have decided never to change that even as of last year or the year before?
We're not a policy, but what we try to do is we've been trying to keep the tax rate steady. Obviously, you know, looking at the undesignated funds, it's going up. But we didn't want to make any big fluctuations. We knew we had more paving that was going to be taking place, this and that. So we kept the tax rate at 11.95. We were expecting it at some point. This year, we raised our paving budget by, I was, a couple hundred grand anyways. By the time we, yeah, well, over $200,000. You know, we're looking forward to seeing what these big projects, we don't want to cut ourselves short. We don't want to fluctuate the tax rate either. You know, you don't want one year being 11 and next year being 13. So we were keeping it at 11.95. Now, to go back to what we were talking about earlier, about every year, we're getting more and more surplus. You know, that's why we're having this meeting. And so we can come up with a plan of how to get our general fund down and to get on some sort of program where we're looking at last year, so how much money we had extra. Okay, maybe we start offsetting and playing with the tax rate a little bit and start putting money back into the, you know, dropping the tax rate with some of the extra money. What I, and what I like to see happen at some point is, and I mentioned it to the other select board members, and I'm not an accountant, so I'm just kind of, kind of come up with these ideas. And, you know, we have this money. I don't want to see a fire sale where we say, okay, we're going to unload a couple million dollars just because we got it. We're in a very good spot, I believe, to have this money. Because like Dennis was saying, we used to pay our bills by taking loans. We don't need to be taking loans and be doing it. But at the same time, we shouldn't, we do have more money. And nobody's arguing that. We don't need this much money. But what we're going to do is come, figure out a way how we're going to spend it appropriately. My idea is, without fluctuating the tax rate a bunch every year, which we don't want to do, is look at a period of time where we can take so much and offset the tax, offset the tax, see what we, see what comes in next year for our surplus, see what we have for our investments coming in, average that out and see what we can do in a, you know, six to eight-year period with that money that we've got. At the same time, have our department heads, you know, come up with a list of must needs. You know, or like Sam was saying, you know, possible a rec...
Rec center.
Thank you, okay. We know the roads are going to want more money for some more paving, okay? We're going to obviously, at some point, need a new ambulance. We have to get a plan together, okay? Try to accomplish a couple things. Offset some taxes in a long period of time and get some capital improvements done at the same time. That's why we're having this meeting tonight.
I'm sorry, there's a question back here.
Yeah, so it seems like we should honestly be more reactive than when we have these big surpluses, that we give the money back.
Yeah.
We worry about the tax rate fluctuation. But it seems like you're being dishonest when you say, well, we've got all this money, so let's figure out where we can spend it. Instead of when you want to spend money and you bring it forth and...
I don't know if dishonest is the way to put it, but...
It's worth doing. So you're just being dishonest when you say that because you're saying we have this big pile of money, it's free money. Well, it's not free money, it's picked from the people in the town.
I think we're here...
People in the town should get the money back. And then if you want to spend the money, you should decide to spend the money.
I think the reason we're here is to make sure there is transparency. So I don't think anyone's trying to be dishonest. We're trying to be very open. The books are open, we're trying to share everything. But as you heard earlier, tax relief was an item, and there are probably many people here that would like tax relief. But there are legitimately other things that townspeople would like to see done in town. And I think all of those deserve consideration, not just one item.
But if you have to raise inappropriate money for something, then you can look at it differently than if you say, well, we've got this whole big pile of money, let's just spend it on this.
Whatever it is, whatever it is spent on will be appropriated. It will be done by town vote. The selectmen are not going to decide to build a rec center.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if you have to, if you have to raise the money and people feel it, then they think differently about whether or not they improve it. You understand, well, it's a big pile of money, so if we just sweep it over here and expect it to that, that's not painful at all.
Okay.
I think what we were trying to explain was, we like to use this money to offset, get the tax rate down. But what we're trying to do here is instead of just getting rid of it, I mean, from what I'm getting out of you is you just want us to take this money, dump it and drop the tax rate down to 2.5 or something like that for one year. Everybody gets a break for one year, then we go back up to 11.9. Because that's what's going to happen. And it's not being dishonest, that's why we're here. We're trying to explain what we, and get your ideas. You didn't come up with that idea, you just explained that we're ripping everybody off. We're just trying to figure, excuse me. We're just, we're here to try to come up with a consensus of what is the best way to spend this money that we know we got too much of.
But you were misleading in the slide here. Let's say at one point, you said you put $300,000 towards tax relief, and that's only $128, so that doesn't mean crap to anybody.
Nobody said that.
And then later, you said, well, we can take $900,000 and spend it on something. Well, $900,000 in tax relief means a lot more than $300,000 in tax relief. So you used two different scenarios there.
It was just used as an example, that's all.
One with $300,000, one with $900,000.
I think we get your point, thank you. Another comment?
Can I just ask, I'm not sure who's moderating or if anyone is.
Yeah.
But I mean, I really appreciate if right now we were limited to questions about your presentation and then if people want to get up and express something, they can do it in that format. Because we're never going to get anywhere tonight.
Thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, that's good.
Just to recap, the money that we currently invested, those are reserved funds only, is that correct?
No, no. The town from its designated reserves, its specific reserves for various capital projects and other things, all of that totaled at June 30, 2022, about $6 million. So that is the money that's been invested.
Do you know what portion of that are reserved funds, or reserve funds?
At that time, the total reserves, both designated and undesignated, I think was around 5.6 million. So the majority of it is reserves. But there's some, you know, there's some other money that we owe for accounts payable that we can have at one time and so on. I don't want to get too delicate, but it's basically reserved money.
Thank you.
Yes, Dennis?
So I just want to point something out real quick. So you talked about bringing the tax rate like way down every year and then way back up if stuff changed. But from what Dennis said, I don't know what the numbers are exactly. We're just going off his point of view when he was talking about the money online, whatever the state, was that there was roughly $300,000 to $400,000 a year extra. If you did the math, to get it to like the $6 million or something ballpark.
Okay.
If you take that $300,000 and you drop it into that line, it only dropped about, it only went down about a quarter percent. So if we did that every year in the tax rate, it wouldn't be going way down and way up. It's only going to go down and up 0.25 percent of $300,000. So I don't think that would be wrong or misleading or, you know, it wouldn't be crazy for the public to see it go from 11.99 to 11.75, back to 11.99, with you guys, you know, looking into this a lot and just being really accurate with it. Is my point, it's not a big shock. It's only going up and down 0.25 on $300,000.
0.25 percent.
And that roughly equals the $6 million that we gained.
Somebody in the back, put their hand up?
Yeah, Brian, listen to Adam Rose. So the reason why I'm here is concerning for the property value going up 95% and the town expenses not going up 95% as well. I know that people are looking for tax relief. I think the average person right now in this economy, wages are not really going up, all prices are going up, people's wallets are shrinking, okay? Every single week, people's wallets are shrinking. And we've just seen a 95% increase on valuation with the fear that that's also going to happen with the, you know, with the mill rate. Just doubling down on, you know, tax relief is needed because it's also going to price out multi-generational families, especially the lovely homes on the waterfront properties around here. I am third generation from my property. Taxes are one of the major concerns for me to be able to maintain this property going forward. My family's been on the lake for over eight, for 80 years. If you include one of our aunts, it's even more than that. Tax rate keep going up and keep going up, I might have to sell my property eventually. You know, if we don't really need so much more income because our expenses are not going up 95%, we should really double down on trying to keep that rate of people's taxes where they currently are, where people are budgeted. You know, people have their household budget, not just the town budget. And doing that is very important to them and shows that you care. Just because you have this extra money, we shouldn't be just finding things to spend it on. You know, children are great, you know. We're not big like sandparks and stuff like that. I don't think we need, you know, 16 different playgrounds and 55 different, you know, buildings for people to run in. You know, there is the woods and the nature and all these beautiful lakes around. Keep the rates down so people come to act them, so people grow their families, and that will all wash out down the line. So just doubling down on tax relief, that's why I'm here.
Thank you. If there are any questions about the numbers, I'm happy to talk about those. Otherwise, I'll sit down and people are welcome to continue to come up. So questions on the numbers?
Do we have an emergency fund?
That's the contingency fund, that's the undesignated reserve fund.
So we don't want to lose that?
Well, we got, as we said, go back up, go back up. It's right down to $9.5 million, which is more than... That's what we're talking about, drawing like that.
Talking about your numbers, the one I would like to see changed would be 30%, and I would love to see it go to 50. I mean, you just take the state of Maine, yesterday announced a $900 and something million dollar and they only got, you know, which is almost a billion in unused funds. And their budget is only about two, it's about $2 billion a year, and which is about 50%, and it wouldn't hurt because of, God forbid, something like happened up in Maine or, I mean, up in Vermont just this weekend, with the floods and the roads all washed out. We have to rebuild and we need a quick $300,000 or, God forbid, building here be hit by lightning and you'd have to replace your town hall. You'd be able to do it.
Good point, thank you. Any other comments on the numbers? Thank you.
I think that's the end.
Oh, sorry, Sam.
So basically, the biggest thing that I'm getting out of it is if we use it for tax relief, it's only going to drop us for the one year and then we're going to go right back up. So we're going to get one year, let's be fair, and then the next year, we're going to go back up instead of having something that we can decide in the town.
I personally think if you used, depending on how much it is, let's say it was $300,000, if you use $300,000, my guess is we'll have a surplus this year. I don't have any idea how much. If we only spent 300, there would be some undesignated reserve left. Hopefully, we would add some surplus to that from this year. Maybe we could continue that 300,000 for another year and another year. That, to me, would be a fine outcome. But, you know, that's all something that still needs to be deliberated. Anyone else?
Excuse me, Tom. Talk about investing, the article that passed on investing. How much of that money has been invested and at what rate did we invest it?
About a week ago, we put $4 million into investments. Or, let me phrase it another way. Money has always been invested. It was invested in Partners Bank, and we were getting a very low return. We have now moved it to TD Bank, and it's earning in excess of 5%. And we left about $1 million with Partners Bank, and they just offered us 4.5%. So we're getting, you know, on balance around 5% for our money, which I think is pretty good right now.
So that money is on top of what, of the revenues that we're going to be earning?
It was in that schedule. $200,000 is, $215,000 is in the tax rate calculation as an estimate for investment income and is providing tax relief.
So did you use the latter method for your investment?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let me get that. Anything else? Yes?
What might be considered is the treatment of the roadways and trimming of branches and trees that lend themselves to power outages and climate weather.
Okay, great point, we'll add that to our list, thank you. I know they're on my road, they're doing that. And I'm not quite sure how many roads they're going to be doing, but they are doing...
50 roads are.
They're doing at least that one road. Anyone else? Joyce?
Yeah, I think one of the things, well, I should say that I was the last chairman on the capital improvement committee. And one of the things people don't think about, David briefly mentioned the fire department in the next four to five years is going to need a fire truck, an engine this time. I'm sure you all remember, and Ed can fill us in on this one, right? The $400,000 tanker that took two years to get here. And, you know, if it wasn't our guys at the fire department keeping the one we had running, we could have been in doubt soon. They also need other equipment yearly. The roads need things. This building needs some adjustments every year. The school, the school needs a new roof. The school needs some side work, a sidewalk work done every year. That money has to come from someplace. And if we don't have it, I did give them a list at our last meeting where capital improvement could come up with close to $12 million that we were going to need in the next 10 years. So, you know, if we take, it's like the person who wins a lottery. We take our million-dollar winnings and we put it all in this place and we're happy. And six months later, we're bankrupt, we have no more money. We have to use...
Joyce, we won't be bankrupt. We will... We will not let that happen.
If we don't use what we have here wisely--
Yeah, okay.
If we give it all back for tax relief, then your tax will go up next year and the year after. Because we're still going to have the needs, but we won't have that next state anymore.
Any other comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think folks are coming out. Are there any, anyone else wants to make comments, come to and call to you?
Oh, yeah. Oop, go ahead.
I'm Bernard Broder. I live on East Shore Drive. And I really think the starting point with this is to update our comprehensive plan. Because these are all great ideas and I'm perfectly happy to sit and listen to other peoples. But people who should have a voice in the direction of the town and what assets are used to move towards that are not necessarily here. And so I think the comprehensive plan and maybe using some money to carry that out might not be a bad idea. But that's, that's what I really think about this. I also don't think that we need to make any rash decisions about spending any money or to do it for the sake of spending it, that we've got to get rid of this. Thank you, Tom, for your presentation. I have to say, there's a lot less money that we're talking about than what I thought from what I've read on social media. And, you know, for this town to have one or $2 million more than arguably it should is not a lot of money. There are people with homes in this town that are worth more than that amount of money. One thing I am wondering about is what the balances we have on uncollected taxes right now. Because, and I don't know if you have those figures. Okay. My recollection is it's pretty significant from looking at the town report. And that might be something to step up collections.
I think law government's how we collect. So we just sent out 30-day notices, so they'll, they're all in. I mean, the good news is that we foreclose, you know, less than, usually, you know, one to three properties a year, so they can get paid. It's just a little longer.
Okay, thank you. At least on social media and in part tonight, I think I've heard some suggestions that, not about controlling the mill rate or adjusting it, but actual refunds being issued to taxpayers. You took my money, you used my money, I want my money back. I think that would be an absolute nightmare. I don't know how you would ever equitably do that. I mean, somebody might have paid taxes six years ago and now they live in Poughkeepsie. Are we going to give them back money? Are we going to track them down? People like me that have only lived here three years, do I get some of that money even though I didn't pay it if it was collected five years ago? And so forth. I just think it would really be a mess. I mean, you could end up, if you just said, well, everybody gets X or whatever, you could actually end up giving money back to people who haven't paid their taxes yet. So I can't imagine the work in the office that that would generate. I'm all in favor of tax relief. And frankly, you know, my hometown, the mill rate is like $21, $22 in northern Maine. So for us to even have an 11% mill rate is great. I'm very happy with what I pay for taxes here. Would I like to have more money in my pocket? Yes, but I think it's a bargain here for what we get. And what I want to say on artificially decreasing the rate, yes, it's wonderful for all of us in the short term. But what about the person that moves to Acton? They buy a $300,000 home. Maybe it's their first home, they're new home buyers. And they're kind of banking on my tax rate is 6.99% because that's what we've decreased it to. And then it escalates to what it should have been all along. You know, I think that's like a good intention, but a bad result for people to think that that's actually what the tax rate is. It's artificial and it's temporary. We cannot do that indefinitely. So my suggestion again is comprehensive plan. Great to have these ideas. Haven't heard anything I disagree with. But as my great-grandmother used to say, the best way to double your money is to fold it and put it in your wallet. So I don't think we need to spend anything immediately.
Thank you, Bernie.
Any more comments? We got some emails that were sent in.
We do. The first one says, how about resturfacing Buzzell Road? From the little schoolhouse to where it was done in the past, it would be about six tenths of a mile. Potholes and bumps are showing up, deep dips across the road and the edges are breaking up. This would make it safer and less wear and tear on road equipment and vehicles. Thank you for your consideration. It's a long stretch, it's not a long stretch of road, but it would make a big difference. Hi, Jen. What I would like to see the money is used towards is road bridge and a senior rec center. Jennifer, I would suggest to put some money aside to maintain the roads in Acton. The shoulders of many roads are getting washed out after the heavy rains. If we don't maintain the shoulders, we'll be repairing road breakaways, as in the case by Horn Pond on New Bridge Road. Here's my two cents. I'd like to see a portion of the money returned to the taxpayer. I think it would enhance morals. Secondly, I would like to see a town beach since we have so many beautiful lakes in Acton. And the last one is tax rebates to taxpayers. Tax money given back now will benefit the taxpayers who paid more when it was needed by the town. Past three years have been financially difficult for most people. The rebate would help with future high heating costs, et cetera. Road repairs, especially H Road. Heavy traffic for the transfer station and the gravel pits has been, has done a lot of damage and put a lot of wear and tear on the road. The H Road should also be widened to accommodate the heavy vehicles from the gravel pits. Transfer station improvements, invest a portion of the funds. Support for the various lake association. Acton has many lakes whose lakefront residents pay a large percentage of the taxes, yet don't use a lot of the resources such as education, road maintenance, plowing and transfer station year round. Supporting the lake associations helps keep our lake clean and free of invasive species. This support also helps the native animal species such as loons. Do not raise taxes, do not increase taxes for all residents at this time. Keep a close eye on the budget. Make sure the town does not end up in the same situation.
So if we don't have any more comments from the public, I guess we'll, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.